All right. Good evening. Welcome to the August 23, 2023 meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. Members are in attendance with the exception of Mr. Samaha. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first school committee meeting of the year, so for those joining us, we hope you had a relaxing summer and are getting ready for the start of school coming up real fast at this point. Our first, the next item is approval of items by consensus, and we'll begin with approval of the minutes from the June 28, 2023 regular session. We have a motion, motion by Ms. Burns, and a second by Dr. Bryson, all in favor.
Abstain, I missed that.
All right. So that is, Mr. Fenely abstains, all other members in favor. Next is, I'll check these off as I go, the second reading of the bullying prevention policy, policy J I C F B. So do I have a motion for approval? Motion by Dr. Bryson, second by Mr. Fenely. Any discussion on this policy before we vote? All right, then, all in favor? And that is unanimous. And now we have a whole pile of warrants that have been building up, accumulating over the summer. So I'm going to try and get through everything on this first page in one shot. So we have grants warrants 53, 54, 1, 2, and 3, revolving warrants 61, 62, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, local warrants 97, 98, 99, 100, 101, 102, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, food service 70, 71, 72, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, capital warrants, something I didn't know that that was what that CP stood for, Paul had to explain it to me, 01, 02, and 03, and from carry forward we have warrants 1, 2, 3, and 4. So do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Turner, second by Ms. Burns, and all in favor? And that is unanimous. Next, we have warrants circuit breaker 13 and 1. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Fenely, second by Ms. Ruggiero, and all in favor? And that is unanimous. Then we have payroll warrants for July 5, 2023, July 19, 2023, August 2, 2023, and August 16, 2023. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Fenely, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor? And that is unanimous. And then lastly, we have special education warrant 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Motion by Ms. Burns, second by Dr. Bryson, and all in favor? And that is unanimous. And for those of you counting at home, that was, in fact, 54 warrants that needed to be approved. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Bry.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2023-24 school year. We are thrilled to be at a place of getting ready to open up a school for staff and students, staff report, all staff report next Monday, and so we are in a good place as we press forward with our ongoing preparations for that. But under the report this evening, three items of business, I'll go in order. There's items that are included in the school committee packet for each of these, starting first with the Wildwood at Carter Lane update. There's a memo that you'll see in the packet that provides our community with an update on what we've come to term, as you might recall, Wildwood on or at Carter Lane, the campus really that right now includes the middle school in the West, and soon will include Wildwood that will be hosted by both the West Intermediate School as well as the middle school. It has been a beehive of activity at the middle school this past summer. You, of course, will recall that with the Capitol project that was approved with, really primarily centered around adding restroom facilities, that project has gone on, it started almost immediately as school ended in June, and we're really pleased to be able to share with the community that it is on course and it is on schedule. And what that means is that it will allow Wildwood to open for students and for staff as originally planned and will be in alignment with the Beltwell and our early childhood centers. The memo outlines a little bit more of the information with some pictures around the specific spaces. It is incredibly hard to believe that the hallway has been repaired, and it was a massive hole that allowed for the plumbing to be installed. The restrooms are almost complete. There's still some punch lists and last-minute items, but by and large, I guess I would, 90% done with some still, still some work to go, but they will be ready. All of the materials, belongings, equipment, et cetera, have been moved in, and thank you to the amazing work and support of our Public Buildings Department and Wildwood staff, some of which have already been in, starting to set up their classrooms. So things are well underway, we're in a good place. Undoubtedly, there'll be some growing pains as we make this, you know, this new environment come to life, but we'll get there, and there's a lot of people working very hard behind the scenes for that. You'll note the timeline to opening day, which, again, we're on course for September 6. So I'll pause there, I'm happy to take any questions if there are any on the Wildwood at Carter Lane project.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, just a comment. I think this was great. It was, two months is not a lot of time to get a construction project like this done, so just, you know, maybe a little early, but congratulations to you and also the town for doing all this. So hopefully we'll have a good place for the kids in the fall.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, and I should mention, the playground is installed, was installed yesterday, may even be up. I haven't been by there lately, but some people may have around the table, but it, full anticipation that it will be completely installed by the end of this week. So as I mentioned before, maybe the last thing, not necessarily captured in the memo, but the one, the one overarching concern, if you will, that we do have just from an operational standpoint on that campus is parking and car access. It will be tight. It was tight already with three operating facilities, three schools, rather, the Beltwell, the West, and the middle school, with all staff there while school is in session. There really are not a ton of empty parking spaces there. We have spent a good deal of time doing the calculus for what operating four schools will be on that campus. We have enough parking spots, but it will be snug, and we have, we're going to institute and assign parking area for staff. We think that that will be helpful. The biggest thing will be the need to be very, very mindful of not having competed event, competing events or activities at the same time between two schools. The likelihood of that happening probably is not very high in general, you know, two schools would happen to have on the same day a musical performance where there's dozens and dozens of parents descending on the campuses, but that's about the only area that we're cautious of. We've shared with our, both our fire and police this reality, they're well aware of that, and they'll be partners, I know, in helping assist us, you know, with the management of traffic and such. Moving on to the next.
Actually, before we move on there, I just want to briefly thank again everyone who put in uncounted hours last year as this interim solution was just a major focus of both our school administration, as well as Mr. Cooper and Mr. Hall and the Wildwood Building Committee. I mean, this really, this whole issue of finding a good interim solution for the, for the Wildwood, just, you know, was a huge community issue for all of last year, and to have arrived in this space where I think we all feel really good about the, you know, the solution that we've been able to come up with and for it to be just about ready to open is a, is a great place to be. And I just, I want to extend really heartfelt thanks to everyone who spent so long, all through the last school year and through this summer, to finally make this a reality, and most especially our Wildwood families and community and staff who, you know, have been, been through a lot, and, you know, we think that we've been able to get to a good place. But thank you so much to everyone who made this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Rags, Dylan, and I'll just add as well, my colleague, Ms. Ruggiero, mentioned, Department of Public Works as well has been instrumental, again, an example of the partnership and the support of the town with the signage. In fact, they moved the Wildwood sign over from the Wildwood School, it now sits in front of the middle school, and they've been involved with the playground and other facets here. So it really has been a community effort, and I appreciate your words, certainly very deserving indeed. The next item, Wildwood MSBA update, there are two documents in the folder, a lot of information, and, you know, in the, in the spirit of trying to continue to make sure that not just only this committee, but of course our community remains up to date should they be interested in the MSBA Wildwood project, there will be a constant flow of information, I think, going forward. It's not meant to overwhelm anyone, but just simply to make sure that people are kept informed, and with all of these documents, we will also specifically post these separately on our school website, we have a page for this entire project. The first item to bring attention to is a memo put together jointly by both our owner's project manager, or OPM, which is S M M A, I know a lot of acronyms here, as well as our designer, Doran Whittier. You'll see a joint memo from them, lot of information contained in here, I don't, certainly won't take time to go through it, but just to really provide additional information on where the project is at and where the project is headed in the next short while. Again, with, with this particular project, so much of this has to be in line with what the MSBA requires of communities such as ours. Our designer and our OPM are very, very well informed of all of the requirements of MSBA, we're in excellent hands, and they'll work, you know, on our behalf to make sure that this project hits all of the milestones that it needs to, to keep it moving forward. I'll talk about the educational visioning that, that is mentioned towards the tail end of this memo, and that is the second document, a newsletter format, I suppose, if you will, school building project updates. It will also be my office's effort, or my team's effort, to continue to make sure our Wildwood families stay up to date and, and our entire community on this project, so there's information included in that flyer, hopefully a little bit more accessible, there's a lot of, a lot of terms, a lot of jargon in that joint memo that I just mentioned. It provides an overview of the, the overall program and the different phases of it, and then towards the end includes a listing of all of the planned Wildwood Building Committee meeting, meetings that are currently scheduled for the coming year. These are in the calendar. We've worked hard to make sure that there's as minimal overlap or, or conflicts as possible with any other town meetings or any other events that the school district is holding. I'll just bring attention to the fact that these meetings are open to the public, minutes are taken, they're public meetings, to the greatest extent we can, we will be partnering with WCTV to capture these meetings, and they'll be available for any member of the community to watch. The, the really exciting part that is upcoming before us very soon as a community is what's called, entitled the visioning sessions, or educational visioning sessions. These are mentioned towards the end of this, this brochure, this flyer. There are, there are four sessions that are planned. Back in July, I think it was, the first invitation to our community went out, that has been followed up at least once since. I'm really pleased to be able to say that as of late last week, I think we had 30 members of our community already who had expressed an interest and ability to participate in these, which is awesome. I think the great thing here that our designer has come up with is a plan that allows any member of the community to participate either virtually or in person, and we know that this is obviously, you know, post-pandemic, the ability to access things remotely is something that can really work well for people. Any member of this community who wants to participate in educational visioning will be able to. There's not a cap, there's not a limit, there's not a size that the designer's worried about getting to, and I think that that's, that's going to be a great thing. So if we end up with 50, if we end up with more, everyone who's interested in participating in this is welcome to, to do so. There's still a time period to express your interest in participating, and I think that that is, Ms. Ruggiero, next, September 8, by which we do need to know who's planning to participate. More information can be found on the flyer and on our website, and if you have any additional questions, certainly you can contact my office. And with that, I'll pause there if there are any members of the committee that have questions on visioning or the project at large.
Jay's hand was up first, I'll defer to her. Ms. Burns.
I'll keep it brief, but I have to say, I think the creation of this newsletter with the information and in the way it's all easily understandable, I think it's a great idea, and I, and I think it's, and it's fabulously done. I think it's, I think, I think it's just an excellent additional resource for parents and/or stakeholders who may just jump on the, it's on the main, is it on the, the main page of our, besides the, I'm assuming it'll be on the Wildwood page, but I don't know if it's on the district's homepage.
I think that we are posting these specifically on the Wildwood project page, or I forget the exact.
District Initiative page for Wildwood Project.
We'll, we'll do our best to make that a little more prominent for people to find where that link is.
Okay, that, that might be helpful, especially for those who may not.
Sure.
Being, maybe just stakeholders without direct involvement in the schools, but monitoring progress, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fenely?
Thank you. Dr. Brand, a comment and then a question if I could. I just wanted to appreciate, I guess, your office, the Doran Whittier folks, S M M A, for sort of not restricting the visioning process, right, not capping the number of participants or, or, you know, doing virtual meetings. I think, you know, this is a really important part of this process, and to see it as open as, as it is, is, I think, is a really good sign, and so thank you for that. Hopefully, folks will, will get involved. My question is on the, more the memo than the newsletter, and it's in the work to be performed during the fall of 2023 section. You've got tours of peer schools coming up early October, and it says the, the list of those schools is to be determined, which I understand certainly that'll be, you know, figured out as you get closer, but do you have a sense of when folks might know what schools those are? Just, you know, obviously, everybody can't go on the tours, but, you know, if it's a school in, you know, Burlington, maybe you have family in Burlington, or just, so folks are aware of where the, the representatives will be going, do you know when that might come out?
I don't know, as we sit here right now, when that's going to be finalized. I do know that they're working on that. They have a collection of, they're certainly well aware of some recently completed school projects in these communities, and that's the, that's the focal point of these tours, is to allow, I think the first effort, it may be able to be opened up, but the first effort, I think, and the intention is to extend an invitation to members of the Wildwood Building Committee, to see if there's any interested particip, any members who might be interested and able to visit these schools. The whole idea behind that is just to be able to see firsthand a modern school facility, a modern elementary facility specifically, and, and what can be. That, they believe, is really helpful to inform, you know, sort of the large-scale thinking about what and which direction we may, as a community, wish to go for the eventual construction of a new elementary facility. We know that to be the case. So, so I'll be able to fill you in more on that, but it'll be in the, it'll certainly be in Massachusetts, number one, and number two, they are cognizant of the fact that people are giving up their time, and they can't, you know, drive all over the state, so it's going to be more in this general area, for sure. And as far as the, I'll just go back to your first point around the ability for members of the community to participate in the visioning, which is indeed true, and I, and I thank you for that feedback, and I think it is a great thing. I also want to just bring attention to members of the community that if you're not able to participate, because we recognize it's four meetings, it's a lot of time, and as, as explained in here, it's really, it's pretty important that people who are going to participate are able to be a part of these sessions. There's a, there's a continuity to the, the flow, there's a, there's a, there's a design to these, to these meetings that flow from one to the other. If you are not able to participate in these visioning meetings, there will be opportunities for the community at large to learn about what has been discussed in these meetings and, and what the takeaways are, and our designer is going to work, I think it's mentioned in here, and if it's not, it soon will be, to be determined, public meetings for members of the community, just to hear at various points the work that is unfolding. So please don't worry if you're highly interested in this project, you can't commit that time, it's understood. There will be a chance, though, for, for you to learn more as, along the way.
The end of the memo mentions community forums.
Thank you, that's right. With dates still to be determined, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mr. Turner?
Thank you very much for the updates. Quick question, you mentioned 30 people had volunteered, those are non-district employee community members?
I believe all excl, I think that they are all, yes, I think that count doesn't include anyone.
And have we gotten some level of volunteering from the teachers across the schools as well?
You know, not, not to my knowledge yet, but that's not surprising to me in the sense that they're not, they're not back yet, you know, they're not really monitoring email and such, but we, I'm confident we will, number one, and, and I'm also confident that we will have a representation from our leadership team who will be a part of the, the effort as well.
Okay, thank you.
Comments, questions? I, I would want to just ask one question to make sure that, that I think that our, our role in the rest of this process is clear, that my understanding is that from here on out, the school committee doesn't have many decisions to make, or really, you know, sort of votes to take, obviously we have to be kept informed, but that at this point, the, you know, authority for decision-making on the project rests with the building committee?
Yes, that's correct, that is my understanding. There, there may be one or two exceptions along the way. One I know of that will be in the spring is the need for our district to submit an educational plan that really puts pen to paper, if you will, or, or whatever computer, on paper around what it is that we want for the overall educational design of the new facility. That's something that we have full intentions to bring through the school committee for your approval, but by and large, the thought, the authority for this project is vested in the Wildwood School Building Committee. Of course, there'll be the residents and their voices as well as the project makes its way, but, and just as a reminder, that committee does include representation from this committee, as well as our other town boards and, and various other members of the community at large, parents, guardians, community members, town staff, as well as district staff, so, important point to raise, and thank you. Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll go on to the next item, which is staffing and personnel update, and I'll invite, if I may, Andrea Stern Armstrong, our Director of Human Resources, to come up. There's information in the packet that she'll speak to, as we are obviously on the eve of school opening, it's understood, as is always the case, that there's interest, I'm sure, by members of the committee around where exactly we, we stand right now with our overall staffing. This is always something that I think is just good information for the committee to be aware of in general, but we recognize it's even more, more of interest given the time period that we're in, not just here in Wilmington, not just here, it seems, in Massachusetts, but across the country in terms of really a struggle to fill positions, so we thought that it'd be great to be able to bring to you an update, and Mr. Stern Armstrong has had a busy summer, not unusual, but, you know, perhaps a little bit, bit busier than the last few years in terms of trying to fill some of these openings, so, Andrea, thanks for being here.
You're welcome. Good evening, everybody. So, yeah, it definitely has been a whirlwind with staffing. I will say that I, you probably have updated or the most recent version of staffing that would have been updated today. I will tell you, since then, two more positions have been filled, so we are scrambling to get positions filled. So overall, I'll say that we are in a good place. I don't know if it updated, I updated while we were sitting here, but on the spreadsheet, Gretchen Coats, who's an educational assistant who resigned, and Catherine Kyra, who transferred into a different position, both of those were filled this evening. So letters.
Middle school?
Shawshing.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So we do have currently, and we are in a better place, I'll tell you, there's a few emails going around, openings and vacancies at other district, districts, but we currently have a special ed teaching position open at Shawshing, that was a, an employee who had agreed to start and then backed out last Friday, so we are scrambling. We do have a plan to get us through the beginning month or so of the school year, thanks to Lisa King, our school psychologist who resigned two weeks ago roughly, that was anticipated, so we did get a posting out, but I don't think there's any applications yet for that. An ed assistant position, educational assistant positions open at the high school, which was filled, and then they backed out today. Unfortunately, that does happen with our educational assistants and teachers sometimes, but they backed out today. An educational assistant position at the Wildwood, which has not been a big focus to fill as of yet because the student numbers are down a little bit for this particular class, so it likely will be filled in September, but we, there hasn't, has not been a rush to get that one filled. And then, not for full-time staff, we do have two long-term teaching substitute assignments at the middle school, which we're focused on getting filled as well. So we're trying to fill everything we know going into the school year for the first half of the school year, but those are our current openings, so, not going with it, nothing changes and that we're in a good place and will continue to be, but I will say, everybody is scrambling to move people around and get staff hired, so. Comparison to other towns, just as a brief thing, and then I know you probably have questions, but there, the emails that are going around, for example, which blew my mind and very different based on the districts, but there are districts that have 200 openings for teaching positions, there are a few towns that have 20-plus para, para-professional positions open. That's pretty much, but the average number of para-professionals in other districts, at least six of the districts is 15-plus, so, and we tend to have more para-professionals in other districts, so, so I do feel like, when I was seeing the numbers, I do feel like we're in a better place, and ready to open up the school year, so. I don't know if, questions?
Questions, Ms. Burns?
So with regards to, I know some of these are the most difficult positions to fill, like the school psychologist and the special education aspects, and sometimes, do you have things in, in the pipeline that, applications coming in that are being considered, or have they, have it, has it just been reposted again, and?
For some of the positions, they've, so for, for example, the school psychologist, that came in so last minute, so it was posted as anticipated because we did hear that that, that a individual was going to resign but was waiting until a certain date to do that. We don't, as of yesterday, there weren't any applicants through school spring, which is the, the larger majority where applications come from. There are other resources that we can post on, so I try and post wherever I can to get positions. Not ideal all the time, but there are staffing agencies that Student Support Services utilize as well as I've been utilizing, so it depends on the position, so there are some positions that Student Support Services will contract with, and then for me, for, since the beginning of COVID, I've been utilizing some staffing agencies to help fill some of the long-term sub-teaching positions and the educational assistant positions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ruggiero?
Sure. Thanks. So with the positions that you're still looking for right now, are the teams adequately staffed enough to cover those gaps while you're still finding those positions?
Yes. So for example, you Shawshing, we worked out a situation, a few staff to cover the sub, the special education teacher that is no longer, that's vacant, that position. There's somebody else in the school that will help cover that while an ed assistant will step in and do some of the instruction with the students, so we do have a plan. This isn't the first time this has happened, so we end up doing MOAs so that we can work through everything with the staff, so we did take care of that yesterday.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Turner?
I just want to say, again, like last year, it's a tremendous amount of, of work you've done over the summer to get this filled, it's amazing the shape we're in, and, and really greatly appreciated that it is, it, I mean, there, obviously, there's, there's more still to be done and, and a few positions, but it's not 20, it's not 30, it's not half the list, it's, it's amazing how much work you guys have accomplished this summer.
I do, you know, I agree and thank you, that it, it's scrambling, but it's one of the things for myself that I feel, you know, it's crucial that we open up, you know, fully staffed if possible, so today, when they came in, the priority is to, you know, get the paperwork completed, get it to Mr. Ruggiero, to Dr. Brand, so that we can get letters going out, because there is a process within the central office, so some of the changes come rapidly, and, and that's, you know, even with the hiring, but then also people, for example, at the high school, we had someone hired in the spring for a position, they backed out after signing the offer letter. The summer, we got someone else hired, and then they backed out after signing their offer letter, so changes happen quickly, so.
Whenever you describe the, sort of the flurry of last-minute sudden resignations and hires, I always think of just like, it's like, you know, the sand shifting beneath your feet, like, you never have, until the opening day of school, you never have a, a solid picture, you know, I think every time solid picture, you know, I think every time you've come before us with that, with this update, there's always something new since even that day, like, you know, we get an update like that morning, but it's like, oh, well, it's actually changed since then, let me give you the latest update.
It absolutely has, speaking, you know, like, it, it has been, you know, a few times this version of the staffing update has been changed, so I figured I was going to leave one out earlier, and I just updated, you know, when I sat down here, so it'll be ideal if we can update that by tomorrow, but I'm not sure if that will happen, but we will still focus on it, so.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much, Andrea.
You're welcome.
Just really quickly, the latter part of the memo, you'll, you'll see there, I just want to thank Mr. Stern Armstrong as well for her leadership, you'll see there that it was because of her that we are now proudly a member of the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, an organization that she's been aware of, and sought to get our application accepted, which, as she shared with, with us, not an easy thing, and a long list of folks that are on that, and, on that waiting list, and so we're proud to be a part of that, and we're, we're, I don't want to speak for, for Andrea, but hopeful that this will be another avenue that we can not only seek to attract and, and ultimately hopefully retain staff through another channel, but also in particular, as we look to diversify our workforce. I don't know if you want to add anything else, Andrea?
No, I was excited when it, you know, came across opportunity, I was a little, I think skeptical about it, because when I heard that, that how many applications were being accepted, how many applications could be submitted, how many districts were being accepted into it, I did not know that we would, or did not feel 100% confident that we would get accepted, spent a lot of time on the application, and was very relieved that last week or before, that we got accepted, so, so we'll be working with other districts, it's monthly meetings, our first meeting starts on the 20th, but the goal is really to connect with the people, and hopefully, you know, really diversify our staff, and learn some other things to bring back to our students in our schools, so, it'll be exciting.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Brenner, anything else?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
Have a good night, nice to see you.
Thank you.
You as well.
All right, that is the superintendent's report, next is public comment, Mr. Fenley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there were no public comments submitted, and no members of the public signed up to deliver public comments, and they're our only staff in the room, so I think public comment is closed for the evening.
All right, open and closed. All right, that brings us to new business, and our only item of new business is the Wilmington Middle School Handbook. Dr. Quirk?
Yes, Dr. Quirk comes forward, this, this is here, really primarily because of the fact that with a, a number of the changes that have been taking place at the middle school throughout the last number of months, it just, time didn't permit to really get all of those ironed out, and clarified on paper, so to speak, back at the time period in which you were receiving the, the High School Handbook. Typically, as you may recall, we try to pair those two handbooks together, even though under Massachusetts General Law, school committees are only obligated to approve each year, annually, the High School Handbook, it has been customary here with this committee to also approve the Middle School Handbook, so it's here tonight because it's provided some more time for Dr. Quirk and her team to incorporate into the handbook some things like the wind block, for example, mention of advisory and so on, and so, so it's here to present to you this evening, with the hopeful, your hopeful approval, and then in so doing, we'll be able to move that out to families, so, Dr. Quirk, thanks for being here, and turn over to you.
Yes, thank you for giving me the extra time, and having us here tonight. The handbook, I've, and thank you for the suggestions, I know you had some additional comments after you primarily read it over the weekend, so I've tried to incorporate both the changes that I had made, plus your comments, but overall, like Dr. Brand said, we were adjusting it to update things as much as possible, as far as staffing. We have done a great job in the last couple of weeks, so even this, I have to update again, the staff list, because there's a couple more people's names I could put in there, which I'm pretty excited about. The time schedule, too, is something that I'm working out with now, having the Wildwood in the building, right, making sure that a lot of the procedures that we had, like even just down to arrival and dismissal, how a fire drill is going to happen, those sort of things, all needed to be revamped, as I learned how to adopt to share the space with the littles, as I call them, even in talking with Principal Kate this afternoon, when talking about lunch, you know, the fact that the kids can't get their lunch and carry it to the table, or to carry it down the hallway, they're just, that, they'll spill it, right, where I'm just, it's just something that I'm not used to, right, so we've ironed out a lot of that, and that's already implemented here, and on top of all of our schedule changes for the wind block, and how that's going, and with the change of the classes, some of the classes in the UA Wheel, and the core classes, and trying to get kids the interventions that they need, so that they can be successful. I can go through some of the changes that I made, or I can, I tried to address them in the memos that you all received, so I know there was a lot, I don't know where to start.
Are there maybe just like a few highlights that, or things in particular, that you would draw to our attention, and the community's attention?
Sure.
And then we can get into questions?
So, I'd say there were three major changes that I, that I had implemented, was again, the, the schedule, right, and the implementation of the wind block, and trying to explain that. There is another, always trying to align to the high school as much as possible. If you notice, the disciplinary code is the same, you know, there'll be some changes where it would have said, a high school student, or, or things of that nature, or something that might have applied more to a high school student, I tried to remove, but that has been completely aligned, along with the honor roll, and how students are determined by honor roll, was taken directly from the High School Handbook, to make sure that we're aligned, and, and looking at students in the same way. And then the third piece was, and this was more of a district thing that we've been working on, with the help with Dr. Brand, but was the attendance, which I know there were a few comments with that, with the change. I can tell you that, you know, attendance is the first way for, as, you know, the kids' being in school is, is the best way for them to learn, right, they have to be in school, and, and having some of the changes in the attendance policy, will, I feel, will help administrators and, and teachers with, with getting the kids to come to school a little bit more, so I'm happy to see that we're looking at that and talking about that, and I know that there were some questions and changes, but I would say that, overall, those were the three big things, besides, you know, like, our arrival and dismissal has changed a little bit because of the Wildwood, and when they're coming in, and making sure that the parents can drop them off as they walk them into the school, should work out perfectly, but there will be a lot more traffic, and just trying to manage that, you know, some of the, there's some smaller things there, but I would consider those more minor changes due to our current living conditions.
All right, Ms. Burns?
So, I know I mentioned, I thank you for the, for hearing some of the suggestions and comments, and I, the format that it was delivered is, I thought was very helpful in seeing others, others' comments. I do, as I mentioned in my questions, just to the superintendent, I do think that we should, we should incorporate the forms, the query form, and the, those forms for reporting, whether it be bullying, or if there's any other forms that are made into the back, they were, they were put back there several years ago, because parents weren't aware of, of the formalizing, of putting a complaint, and having a paper trail in that process of investigation is very helpful, and it was, it was helpful for, I've only heard positive things, in the sense that it was helpful for parents to get, know the procedure and the process of, of filing an investigation or a complaint of bullying, and so to have it removed, I'm not sure regarding what, where the discussion lied, because I, I, I know that I would have, I've, I've always advocated for that piece, because it's, it's been helpful, and it, parents, you know, having those resources of just forms, whatever, you, you know, it may not be health forms, but, you know, those general forms to access, I think only support the process in order to make your job and your administrative assistant, you know, that workflow move smoothly.
I think, I mean, I can tell you that it hasn't been in our handbook for the past couple of years, that form particularly. I think that the, the thought process was to more streamline them, in case there was an update, to make sure that there was one location on the website for the form. I can tell you, from my personal experience, I've had more people fill out that forms in the past few years than I had previously, this is my eighth year, so I think it's a, you know, and I, I have no problem putting it back in, but I think the thought was, much like originally, this document, when I first inherited it, was, you know, now it's roughly about 100 pages, was close to 200, because there were those forms, there were copies or, or the link, not the links, but the wording of each school committee policy, right, and so it just led to another place to have to update. I have no problem putting it back in, I just, I, I think that was the thought process a couple of years ago, to do that, and I know that that's been across even the High School Handbook, too.
So, I know that it has, it has been brought up, and at each time, it was brought up, that I mentioned, and I requested that the forms be added, and they were not added, because I'm, I've only, it's only because of previous encounters, this may be before you, you had gotten in, I just want to make sure that parents have easy access, that they know the forms are there, and, but since the handbook, well, back then, though, too, when we initially started putting the forms in 10 years ago, they were hard copy handbooks that went out to, to families and students, so I have, I just wanted to make sure that perhaps even, so the forms that you referenced, it's on the middle school website themselves? Okay.
The health, each of the one of the, like, I tried to look up as to, for that question for tonight, tried to look up as many as I could, I know that there's the-
It only that you add the query form into the handbook, so that's why led me to the thing.
Right, it's the only one that we left over, and I could see where it's like, well, why is that one in there, and, and not the others? You know, there is, you know, I try to send out communications, like, there is the approval for sex education at the middle, like, that form is there, but I also send out a letter to the parents, informing them that they'll be in health class, and, you know, we might be talking about this, and do you want to opt out of that section of the health curriculum? And then there's the medical health forms, which we send out newsletters, which have them attached to it as well. I, I could put them, I could put it back in, I-
I don't know, even just at that joint, if it's on the same website with the handbook, even just may, perhaps a reference for, for, for middle school forms, you know, I don't know, you know, some, I don't know, I just, I just, I want to make sure, because I just want to make sure parents are aware of the, the process in order to expedite concerns.
You know, and I try to always bring it up at the beginning of the new year, like a newsletter, and I'll, I'll make sure that I continue to do that perhaps throughout the years, too, just to remind them that the forms are here, and I can, the smores newsletter is a, a great format, and we can send the link, you know, so it's just a button there, I can definitely do that, and maybe we could talk about it, and then implement, see how that works, and implement it for next year, or I could put it in now, it's just-
I'm just saying, if, maybe perhaps some, some guidance for additional middle school forms, you know, at the very, very end, it doesn't have to be prominent by any means, and if that's accessible, and, you know, that, that's all I, I think I'd-
Dr. Bryson?
Jump in, well, actually, so I don't disagree, I just wonder, to your point of, of the forms changing, and having one place, is there not, could we not just put the link in the handbook, as opposed to the actual forms? I think that probably makes more sense.
I could absolutely do that.
And I, as a, I think I, I don't know if I love this idea of sending out this form in like a newsletter, like, hey, it's here, like, I feel like it should be, people should know where to access it, but we also don't want to be like, making this something like, so it needs to be easy to find, for sure, but I don't think we want to send out, oh, and by the way-
I'm send out like a reminder, like, to the, the websites of resource, you know, and here's where you can access certain things, that type of thing, I don't send the link to the bully.
But I think just having the link there might be really helpful, I, so I agree, like, having, we don't want people trying to navigate to find things they need, and they're going to, I mean, not that someone's going to go through 100 pages and be like, where is that, you know, I think, but if it's in that place, and at least we know when it's being updated, it's being updated properly, so.
Mr. McCauley?
Yeah, thanks, so, I agree with you, Jen, it was, kind of have a link, question I would have is, I really liked what you were saying, Dr. Quirk, about aligning with the high school, and trying to harmonize, what's, what is the high, I mean, I should know this, this was a couple of months ago, but I forgot, so that's on me.
Last time I checked, they were not in there, they were not, the forms were not in there.
Okay, are they linked, or anything like that, in the high school one?
No, not that I remember.
Okay, so, that might be something that we could think about for next year with the high school, or something like that, but, you know, having some link could be good.
Just, if I may, just on this particular point, so the, these, a lot of these forms, and it's not to say that we can't improve our compilation of these, they are posted under the family section of our website, and I, I don't mean to suggest that, it's just, while they're there, people should know, but it's just, it is a location where, and I think we can improve, in terms of the compilation or consolidation of various forms, that are routinely used over the course of the school year, that would hold true for elementary, middle, or, or high school families, for that matter, to access. I do think that there should be a common way or approach to it, whether it be a link in the handbook, or off of a school's website, or, or so on, I think multiple ways that don't make it hard for, in this case, families to find the form, to complete, I think that that's, that's, that's what we need to try and simplify for folks.
Dr. Bryson?
And if you Google in WPSK bullying form, you do get taken right to the bullying and harassment page, which then brings you right to that bullying incident report form, so if someone is not trying to navigate it, it is, you know, I hear you.
But if you, you don't know exactly how that, will you get that, or will you get Missouri's forum, you know, sometimes, and just, even just like feeder, you know what I mean, to that area would be helpful.
Get the form from Wilmington, Delaware?
Yes.
We're North Carolina.
Yeah, yeah. Just to make, you know, easier.
Sorry.
Dr. Bryson?
I have a question. On the discussion about when, on page 24, bullet three, so I'm just trying to, as I'm reading this as a parent, but this bullet, number three, reads as though, I'm a teacher, and I just want to clarify-
Sure.
That, because the parent won't be provided with that, right?
The teachers will be provided with dedicated time throughout the school year, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Burns?
Just a quick comment, I have to say, absolutely love the introductions at the beginning, I thought, I thought, I just, just reading, I was like, this is, this is exactly what I want to go, you know, what, to, you know, to see that, just wonderfully done, and wonderfully put, and metaphorically, and, you know, and I thought, you know, you and your assistant principals did a, you know, a wonderful job, and, and I think it was a great segue to the others as well, because I, I just thought each of, you know, it was, it was such a wonderful welcome, and I just, I, I think that's important to note, and I think it's a, I mean, I, every year, I think it's, you know, it's, it's hard to do a welcome for the new year, but I really have to say, this, I think, was such a, it really was such a bright, I enjoyed it very much, and I, I appreciate it very much.
Seeing a lot of sunflowers throughout the year in advisory with different projects that we're already planning, so.
But I just, how you incorporated that, it's just so very uplifting and optimistic, and I think everything, it, the way I interpret it for myself is, you know, it's change and evolution, you know, with sunflowers, any place, but sunflowers are the best, you know, which is exactly what the middle school is in the process of doing, you know what I mean, growing and reaching for the stars.
And there's a lot of changes this year, so.
Exactly, but I, I do have to, just wanted to make a reference, because I thought it was fabulous.
Mr. Turner, and then Dr. Bryson?
One particular point with regard to lockers, page 35, it, it looks like this is actually changed, certainly a change from last year, and even changed from the August newsletter, to give the teaching teams some level of discretion on when students can go to their lockers. Part of what I understand, historically, it's been a challenge for lockers, is the time after seventh period before the buses leave can be so short for some students, that there isn't time to get to the locker if they put their coat there, and so a lot of them will drag their coat with them the whole day, because they don't have the time, they might have time in the morning, but they wouldn't have time after, and so if the teachers have this sort of, are empowered in this sort of way to, to be flexible about it, allowing the students to go before seventh period, would give them a chance to actually use their lockers, and I've, I've heard anecdotally, and, and more broadly, that, that lockers aren't that well-used, and considering the weight of some of the backpacks, I, I would certainly like students to be able to use the lockers, and this looks like an improvement to that.
It still provides the little bit of the flexibility, right, so it's, every student will be given a locker, and while, you know, we have to realize that five out of the seven classes for students are on- that five out of the seven classes for students are on team, is the way that we call it, like, within their hallway, right? Where they're just crossing the hallway, and their lockers are right there, so, you know, it'll be one of those times in those transitions when, that they could get it for the next couple of periods, but it'll be when it's on team. You know, we do run into it a little bit when the last period of the day is a UA, right? And having to go back down, but, you know, we do try to work with that. So it still provides the flexibility of, you know, not set times, but that they're flexible with it, and that kids can use it as much as possible.
Thank you. And one other quick point, the hall pass system, I'm very happy to see that, and I hope that works, it's, in my understanding, is it's working well here, and I'm, I'm very hopeful to see that.
We're both, do you think, sorry, it didn't mean to interrupt, but we're also implementing MyFlex Learning this year too. So E-Hall Pass will allow students to request a pass, and allow, you know, if a guidance counselor needs to see a student, can do this sort of thing all electronically. MyFlex Learning will allow, in two ways, I'm hoping that we can implement it at the middle school. So, with the win block, after the first five or six weeks of them having their executive functioning and study skills lessons, and we do our first round of assessments, the teachers will then be taking their students and, you know, okay, well, these kids need some extra math help, so they're going to go with their math teacher. MyFlex Learning will be a way that we could keep track of where the students go in these cycles, without having to change a lot in Aspen, and still be able to keep the building safe and the students safe, where we know where they all are and are accountable, as well as for our after-school groups. One of the, you know, the, the time right after school in that hour, you know, it's been hard, it's a large building, but it's been hard to man, you know, as much as I might know when the clubs are happening and who's there are, I don't, I, you know, not having a complete sense of who is in the building, right? Students can tell their parent, you know, we've caught students, because students can tell their parents, oh, I'm staying after for Mrs. Jones, and Mrs. Jones isn't there, right? So, this will allow us to record when the teachers are there, all of the students, so I can instantly pull it up and say, okay, well, you were supposed to, you're supposed to be in robotics club, but you're not, right? And be able to keep track of all that too, so I'm pretty excited about that. And that'll be implemented at both schools this year.
Another way to align between the two.
Thank you. I just have a, a thought on, back on that win piece, right after the win on page 24 is the description of the mark lessons, but the mark lessons really go with advisory block, so I'm just wondering if a.
I can move that.
A switch there might make sense. As a parent, I was reading it, and I was like, wait a minute, they're doing mark during win? No, wait, they're doing it during advisory, so I think just to streamline that might be easier for families. And then on 25, and I did not look through that email, that, I did not look through that whole chart in detail, so if some of this is repetitive to some of my colleagues, I apologize, but on page 25, it says you're, under Google Classroom, the last sentence, compile all the updates across your students' Google Classrooms, which I feel like should be your child, so I feel like when we're talking about our, like, parents, it's our children, not our, I don't say my student, I say my child. But I didn't look through it carefully enough to know if that happens throughout, so I guess whatever it is, I guess, as long as it's consistent, but if, as a parent, you'll have the choice.
I do say that sometimes.
You see what I'm saying? Your child.
Or your child, your student, you know, to change the word, so it might be.
Oh, I didn't look through it carefully, yeah.
It might be student sometimes and child the other times. I can tell you in the updated version of the handbook, I have advisory block, and then I have mark lessons after it.
Okay.
To go, to go with your first comment.
Okay, okay, okay.
So.
Am I not looking at the updated version?
It was linked at the top of the spreadsheet with all the additional comments that I received.
So it's not in our packet?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't realize that either.
I thought that it would, I thought this was the updated version, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Oh, I didn't.
I'm looking at the packet, I'm not looking at that, so.
So it's linked at the top of the document of the spreadsheet with the additional comments.
Because this is a PDF. How did that link came through when I downloaded it?
I'm sure it did, I just assumed that the packet had been updated.
But it's, so on page 25, it'll, it'll, has the advisory block, and then it has mark lessons after the advisory block.
Perfect.
I only saw one attachment to that email with a response, I didn't.
It's a link at the top.
I don't know that, I'm just checking, I don't know that that link came through when I downloaded it to a PDF.
Yeah, the link doesn't.
Doesn't work?
No.
So that's my, that's.
No worries, no worries.
Apologies on that.
Mr. McCauley.
Yeah, thanks. So, thanks for putting this together. I actually have, my daughter's going to be entering sixth grade, so for the first time, so first time going to middle school, so this is actually really interesting for me, because I have no idea what goes on in the middle school, so reading through it all.
Will you be joining us on the tours?
I, I'm hoping to.
Okay.
Definitely. So, I think in the memo you wrote back to us, a lot of my questions were answered.
Good.
I had just a few others that kind of came up. One was around the cellphone usage. To me, that read maybe a little bit on the vague side, and I was kind of wondering, like, what are the, the rules in the middle school for using the cellphones?
So, technically, cellphones are not allowed, but we realize that students bring them, and there's nothing I can do to stop that. So it's the seen is not heard, you know, seen or not seen and not heard.
Yeah.
If we do see them, then, you know, they, we can take, you know, we do, if they come, become a disruption, you know, the E-Hall Pass would be, is going to be a way to, that, you know, it'll be electronic on their Chromebooks, they won't be using it on, on their phones, which, it does have the capability of doing that, but we're not going to be doing that at the middle school. You know, sometimes teachers, it's, it's vague, because sometimes teachers will allow students to use them for different things, like, we'll have a QR code hunt in the school, and they'll be using them, but typically, I promote that they do not use them in school, you know, as part of their curriculum, it's, it's a have and have not type of thing as well.
Sure.
So, but overall, for students, we should not, you know, I, I can't stop them from bringing them in, but it's a, I don't want to see them, nor do I want to hear them.
Okay. So, to kind of clarify, classroom, definitely not, cafeteria, break, in between the halls.
Yep, we are telling students to put them away, giving them warnings.
So, students aren't allowed to use them at all. I was wondering if that can be spelled out a little bit more clearly, if that's, if that's possible?
Sure. I can absolutely do that.
You know, because, so, in my perspective, this is just me, but I know a lot of other parents are feeling this way, is that, you know, the kids will need to, are bringing phones into school, you know, to help with the after-school activities, so they can call up and get, get a ride and everything like that.
Right.
But I think kind of really setting the expectation, you can have it, but this isn't, you're not supposed to use it during school, school hours at all, this is for after-school.
And we do have a phone too, that we allow students to use to call.
Okay.
Parents, if they forget it, or it's at a battery for a variety, or they lost it, for a variety of reasons, so, but I can definitely make that more specific.
Okay, great.
I'd like to comment on, on this too, just because on the same topic, if that's all right.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Because I think you have some more, but I just wanted to go on the same topic. I, I was glad to hear you say before that, that you discourage the use of phones, because the policy does say that unless students are specifically requested to have their cellphone for that class, and it's been my experience, I think, that I'm uncomfortable sometimes with how frequently that seems to be the case, especially at some of the younger grades. And I mean, obviously, we, we can see the direction everything has been moving, but there are still families who don't want their middle, you know, certainly their, maybe not, not their eighth graders, but there are certainly sixth grade people, you know, sixth graders entering the middle school, and their families really don't want them to have a phone yet, for, for a lot of reasons, and I, I think that it's really helpful when the school helps support that, rather than make the situation kind of worse, because obviously, we know that, like, all kids want phones, and if you have to, you know, if the teacher is now expecting that students have phones, and that, oh, everyone else takes out their phone to do a, you know, a classroom activity, I don't have a phone, then that just makes, obviously, the student feel worse, and makes it even harder, you know, for the, for the parents to, you know, be able to exercise that judgment that they have about, about the technology use. And so, you know, obviously, there's some things you can do only with phones that you can't do with Chromebooks, but especially when we have one-to-one Chromebooks, I, I would really hope that teachers are minimizing, especially in the early grades and sixth grade, the expectation that students should, you know, have a phone, and that, and that it would be used, you know, in class.
And I, you know, and I've sent out messages to parents too, like, last year, we, you know, and this is every year though too, but we've had students just automatically go to the bathroom, call their parents, I'm not feeling well, without checking in with our nurses, right? We have two full-time staff nurses that are there to help students in whatever way, and please, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to discourage students to not talk to their parents when I say this, but we do have the personnel to help students, to help make those decisions about, you know, whether they're, they should go home or not, and a lot of times, parents were just coming and picking them up, saying, my kid called them, to get, you know, to get dismissed. So, you know, even with those conversations with parents, like, you know, that's, as much as they have them for those emergency reasons, we also have help here for them too, that they could be using to help with that. So, I try to promote the non-use of cellphones as much as possible.
Thank you. Mr. McCauley.
Thanks. Yeah, no, just to follow on with that, not to, you know, beat a dead horse, but adding that to the handbook to really kind of enforce that, I think would be good, because I have heard about people going to the bathrooms just to use the phone and all that, and really setting that expectation. Now, understood, you're not patrolling everywhere, and, you know, parents will let kids do everything, but just kind of giving that general sense to the community may be helpful.
Okay, I definitely will.
I've even seen some classrooms put, like, shoe holders up front, everyone needs to put their phone in, and if there's something that they need for the class, they can get it, but they don't have their phones until the class is over, and they move on to the next.
Some of our teachers do have that.
Do they? That's creative, I like that.
Yeah, that's good. So, if I can, so my second one. So, the other question I had was around kind of lunch process, that I was thinking it may need a little bit more explanation. Just what I've heard anecdotally is that there may be more rules and processes in place than what the handbook is currently stating, just so awareness for parents, so then they can tell the kids, like, hey, this is what you can expect for what lunch is going to be like and everything. I, you know, the question would be, is the handbook the appropriate place to explain this?
So, we do have, you know, we have advisory with our students, that will be happening on, once every six days, we're on a six-day cycle.
Yeah.
But the first two days, we, we have a longer advisory. The first day of school, we'll have an hour and a half advisory, and the second day, we'll have an hour. During that, those longer periods, we go through school expectations, and one of them is the cafeteria, where the students, where we go through the detailed information, more detailed information as to, you know, what they need to do, where they need to sit, what our expectations are, and things of that nature. I can definitely, I mean, it's all done, I can definitely add that into the handbook.
Yeah.
I can also share the presentation with the parents too, if you think that that would be helpful, as an incoming sixth-grade parent, but we do go over all that and reiterate it throughout advisory with, definitely within the first couple of months, and whenever we feel, you know, they're students, they're children, so sometimes they need it said again, maybe a few months later, right? So.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that, because I, I remember hearing last year, I think, here at school committee, and then also just from other people in the community, you know, sometimes our students aren't the best communicators to the parents, you know, that things get lost in translation sometimes, so I think kind of spelling it out here, like, hey, this is how we run lunch, this is why we do it, and being really clear for the, the parents and the guardians, I think could be quite helpful, and I, I like the idea for the incoming sixth-grade orientation, kind of explaining that too, and also give people a bit of a, you know, collect some feedback and explain the rationale, like, the reason why we do it is X, Y, and Z.
And it's a good point too, because we're, you know, in the past, maybe we've had the tours, and we've had earlier in the summer, and the scavenger hunt, those were two, you know, as much as we're still going to have them, I'm happy to say that we have about 170 students in the incoming sixth-grade class signed up for the tours, we had to reschedule them due to the construction, and we had, I couldn't do both, so I decided to just do the tours and not the scavenger hunt. You know, the small group tours, a parent can come with them, so we do answer a lot of questions then, and as well as during the scavenger hunt, when the students were all trying to remember all the things that they learned at the tour, I would meet with, myself, Mr. Kyra, Mr. Faircloth would meet with the parents and discuss a variety of things, such as lunch. And so, I thank you for bringing it up, because it's a, I would have, you know, in my mind, we do those things, but we didn't get to do it this year, and from your perspective, especially as an incoming sixth-grade parent, reinforcing that is not a bad thing, so, and sharing that information, so I will do that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Turner, and then Mr. Fenley after.
On the cafeteria topic, one, one thing I forgot to mention earlier, I understand the house theme with the middle school, but I also understand, coming from fifth grade to sixth grade, a lot of times, kids will get broken up amongst the houses, and then across the course of the year, there are fair enough years, there's a fair number of students who do change houses, and so, within the cafeteria setting, I can understand in some parts of the time, maybe sitting with their house, but the idea of, of making that a permanent sort of feature seems a little bit odd, and then also could link towards, another one of those things of linking towards the high school, giving it, and maybe it's every other day, maybe it's, or maybe it's the beginning of your new shift, but giving the students the freedom to sit with who they want to, I think would be kind of empowering, and could also potentially be, I don't know, I, I, I think that might be a benefit for the students, and might help them with that time that is less structured than the rest of their day.
I don't necessarily disagree. I would say that, you know, our goal is to get to the, the students to the, you know, with everything that we do in the cafeteria, to the point where there, it's a small step for when they come to the high school, right? The high school, they could sit where they want, they have to line themselves up, and they have to, you know, if they have a half hour, they have to realize that, you know, no one's telling them where to go get something and make sure that they get something to eat, they have a half hour to do it, and that's our goal, right? Typically, you know, as much as we have the kids sit in houses, there are times in the sixth and seventh grade that we allow them to sit in other places, where in the eighth grade, we're letting them sit where they want predominantly throughout the whole year, for the most of the part of the year, if not the entire year. With the goal then too, is that they're starting to line themselves up a little bit more, because there's no, like, at the beginning, we're calling them up by rows to make sure, and making sure the lines aren't getting long enough, and we're hopefully trying to show them, you know, sometimes it might be better to sit for a moment, instead of get in line and have it be standing in line with 50 students, you know what I mean? So, but in the eighth grade predominantly, we let them sit where they want to.
Okay.
And there are opportunities between the sixth and seventh grade where they can too. We're slowly relinquishing some of the things that we do with them throughout the three years, so that's a small step for the high school.
That's good clarification, thank you.
Mr. Fenley.
Thank you, Dr. Quirk. Your response to the questions was super helpful, I think, I was telling Mr. McCauley, I hadn't gotten to my questions yet, but then I got the response, and so, thank you. But a, a question and then a comment. Page 43, 44, it shows like the map, and sort of the entrance points, and I understand that the discovery door will now be the Wildwood door, right? So students won't be allowed to use that one. Just curious how you plan to monitor and/or enforce that, right? Probably just the first couple of days, but does, like, Mr. Faircloth stand there and direct people?
Sure, so, in the morning, you know, when students arrive, we've, we have myself and Mr. Faircloth and Mr. Kyra that are outside, but we also have a few staff members that come in earlier, where they're stationed outside of the building, you know, buses start to drop off a few minutes before staff are supposed to report to work. So, we do have that time gap, but we will, they will be directed this year to the main door, rather than the Wildwood door, so we'll have someone stand both at the main entrance door, rather than the Wildwood door, so we'll have someone stand both at the main entrance and at the former discovery door, the new Wildwood door, to make sure, and it'll be locked. Before, we were also opening up the doors so that students can come in, those doors will be closed. So it'll be the explorer door, which is closest to the Boutwell side, the challenger side door, which is on the other side of the building, and then the main door will be open, but the discovery door, even though it's in the front of the building, we'll have someone there for the first couple of days, but is the plan, but then we'll have, that door will be closed, so they won't be able to get in anyway.
Sure.
And they'll have to go in the main door.
Thank you. And then, this could just be that it's late at night, and my eyes are deceiving me, or this version of it, but it looks like the transition from page 56 to 57, the font size gets significantly smaller? And I don't know if I'm hallucinating, or if that's the case.
There was a change in the font size, oh, 56 to 57, I think it's 57 to 58. Now, I'll look, I tried to make sure it was all the same. I know that there was a change in the font size, specifically with the table with the discipline, but I know there was a comment about reformatting, which I think I tried to accomplish as best I can. I know you don't have the version in front of you, but I can leave this one if you really want to look at it, but I did take care of most of the formatting on that, too.
Okay. And I recognize that the version we're looking at, you've made some updates.
I made all the changes that are in this document here, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Bryson.
This is, this is more for, I think, Dr. Brand and Ms. Elliott, but attendance policy. So I see it, and then I go back to this excused, unexcused, and as a parent who's been here a long time, and I have a senior, I still am not quite sure how that is captured, and so, and I'm not sure that parents know how that is, what's expected. Is there something that's going to go out, like, is that, now, all these years, I'm not sure I've ever been in an open house, or anywhere where someone has said, if you go to the doctor, and you would like that to be counted as an excused absence, you will need to turn in a doctor's note? If you have a child who's sick, and you send in a sick note, that will be marked as blank? If you have a child who needs to go visit a private high school, and you bring in a note that I wrote, I'm assuming, it is then marked as excused? I'm just not sure where parents are getting this, and so I think we're probably all over the map, in terms of what we're getting and what we're not, and there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of consequence, because I hardly ever sent in until high school excuse, because I wasn't thinking, I was like, well, of course it's excused, because it was this. So I guess I'm just wondering what the plan is.
Yeah, so thank you for raising that, and my apologies, because I probably should have brought this to light at the outset. So you're seeing, over the course of the summer, with many members of the leadership team, we talked quite extensively about that attendance piece that you're speaking of, and what you see, just more than a glimpse, it's in this handbook here. What I can tell you is two things. One, we have collective agreement that that language that you see in the middle school handbook, which is admittedly for the first time, but just as a reminder, it's meant to be a complement to your policy, it's meant to be procedural, right? So something that we can work on. That is going to be utilized across the school system, and we had, we've had quite a few discussions over the course of since summer recess, and to this point in time, such that that language will be in all of the handbooks. That's number one, and number two, to your questions there, and the consistency, and how that's conveyed, that is part of our collective effort across the school system, so that we can be on the same point, or reacting the same way when different circumstances come up. We had a lot of discussion about the excuse piece, and that is probably the most tricky of this, because we recognize there are different circumstances for a different student that may warrant reasonably so an excused, that may be, you know, how we have to manage those with our counselors, with our administrators, and with our administrative assistants, is internally what we're developing to make sure that if the same occurrence happens in Building A to that of Building B, it's dealt with the same way. So the messaging to families still has to take place in terms of this language, it's showing up in this handbook, it's showing up in the high school handbook, that will be updated, although you approve that. We have to have a full-court messaging for, full-court press, rather, messaging for families about that. And then internally, we are developing procedures across the school system, such that we can that we can bring that consistency to the table.
And then the bottom, I mean, to me, and this is why I haven't been, like, I'll send in notes, so if Hannah went somewhere, and I'm like, oh, she needs the doctor's note so that she can participate in after-school sports or something, so that, but at the end of the day, a tardy is a tardy, an absence is an absent, like, those absences don't go away. So they're still considered, and so does it matter if they've missed five days because they were ill, and I didn't send a note in, and they have missed five days, and I did send a note in, it's still, they've missed five days, whether it's excused or not, it's a lot of work for the district to be managing. Where is that, do we have a system in place where we can upload these things, or are these literally the administrative assistants taking this and marking it, and it just seems like a lot of work? And the absence number isn't really changing, we're not, they're not getting wiped, right?
Right.
We're not wiping them. You're still absent five times.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess that's my, district-wide, I'm sort of like, are we creating a lot of work for not a whole lot of benefit for these kids? Because those numbers don't change if we send these notes in, so I don't know.
Good point. If I may, so Aspen is a great tool that helps us with these, my assistants do help me with creating reports, but I get like a report every Tuesday morning with the totals of students absent, because the state, regardless of whether I get a doctor's note from the doctor, the parent calls in and says Johnny's not feeling well, or they went to 18 different colleges to look at, right? The state looks at 10% of the school year, and more than 10, as being excessive absenteeism. And I have to look at it as the principle, regardless of whether it's excused or not. So, and, you know, having that information in the handbook, I think would be helpful to me when I sometimes have these conversations with parents, that, well, you knew he was sick, and I, but the point of the meetings that I have is not always that you're in trouble, right, which they instantly think, it's that, well, your child has missed this time, regardless of the reason, and I have to make sure that they're educated. So, but I do think that a consistency, you know, what I have found is that, is people come to the middle school, that, oh, well, this didn't happen at this school, or this didn't happen when they were, you know, at younger grades, and it is a different animal, too, with the students, right? I mean, when they're younger, when they're sick, the parents keep them home more, I think, right? Or they, at least we try, you know, and at middle school, you know, they have to realize that they can't always say, oh, I'm not, I don't feel well, you know, they should try to come to school, just like we all try to come to work, right? Regardless of whether we're not always up to par, right? So I think having it more consistent would help on the secondary level. As far as the work, Aspen gives us everything that I would need, and the secretary, you know, each of the buildings I know type in every day, like, whether it's excused or not, so, and that all gets done before we send out that call. At, you know, each school's different, but that time when we send out that call, when we don't get, we don't know whether it's a note or a phone call from the parent, like, whether the kid, the student is absent or not. But having something more substantial, like this, I feel is going to help those conversations across the district, when we have to have a meeting after five absences, regardless of what the reason is, because we have to make sure that they have made up that time and that they're educated. Is that okay?
I do have one more thing, but I'll wait, I'll hold my...
Well, I'll say something, just quickly on the, partly on the absence policy. And the middle school really is different from the elementary. As important as attendance is, of course, we don't want to have a, you know, an incentive that sends kids into school sick, and so they spread illness and get other kids sick, and now we're really losing a lot of school. There's more concern about that at the elementary age, of course, because elementary students are less able to, worse about washing their hands and covering their mouth, and coughing into their elbow, and so, and so forth, so with, you know, with middle school kids, as you were sort of making the analogy, it's like, we are teaching them to be able to manage, you know, just because you don't feel 100% is not a reason not to go to school, but, you know, we want to, want to make sure they're not actually coming in when they're ill.
And you know, too, that, especially, I think, we're at the middle, we start looking at it, that, you know, if a student's saying that they're not feeling well, there might be another underlying reason why they're saying that they don't want to come to school, right? Where they say it at the younger, oh, I just don't feel well, as they get older, there's the issues come out, right? And we find out that they're anxious, or they're this, or, you know, so looking at attendance is important in that aspect, too, is all I'm trying to say. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Dr. Bryson.
So my last comment, and this again is probably more for Ms. Elliott and Dr. Brand, it's about the grading, and I know that this is just one place where I'm seeing it, but I'm sort of thinking about all this work we're doing, and I know this isn't going to change right now, but all this work we're doing, and this win block, and what this win block is supposed to be doing, and what it's going to mean, and then we've got this, an A is this, a B is this, a C for sixth graders, and I'm like, ah! And I just, I can't let it go without saying, I just don't feel good about the way that looks to families who are sending their children into grade seven, eight. I could be persuaded a little bit differently, although I wish we were, I wish we were pretty much standards-based across that level, but especially for that last year of elementary, it just doesn't feel in line with some of the other work we're doing, and I, I'm worried, actually, that it's quite problematic, to be honest, because I think that what I'm worried about is that win block becomes an opportunity to make sure students are getting a certain grade, and if they're getting that grade, we're back where we were, and, okay, everything's fine, until we find out everything's not fine. And so the grade, as we know, isn't really going to tell us a whole lot, but we're putting a lot of emphasis on it, and families are going to feel really good when their kid has an A. And it's just not giving us a lot of information, especially at that grade six level, and I just, I don't know what to, no, but I'm giving that to you, I know this isn't like, Dr. Quirk, this is a district-wide decision, and I just, I understand middle school is meant to prepare for high school, but I just, in my heart of hearts, I'm like, ooh, this is really, and I think it's going to really make that work hard with that win block, so I'm throwing that to you.
Well... Ms. Burns.
I think I need more clarification, because that win block and that advisory block, that's, it's, it's, it's teaching the whole child, not just educationally, it's emotionally and socially, to function independent. I, granted, and maybe I'm just too rooted in the old school, I mean, that's, that's what I know, what I knew growing up, in going, navigating high school, navigating colleges, is, I just, I hear your reservations, and I think you've planted a seed, but I'm not, and maybe it's just that I don't quite understand where the concern lies. It's supposed to elevate it, it is supposed to, I mean, marks are based on testing and standards, and/or executing something to the best of their ability. So I, you know what I mean, so I take that grading piece in that realm, that's what, when in advisory, you're supposed to do, is to elevate and to ensure kids can learn to their potential. And maybe that's the point in where your concern lies, but, and granted, maybe it's the, I live my life by structure, too, that, you know, goals to attain, you know what I mean? Even if I don't attain, I might, there is that goal, doesn't mean that I'm not going to stop searching for it, so I'm, so, and maybe we can talk offline further about it, just so I maybe have a better understanding of your perspective, but I just, I guess I, I guess I don't, right now, see how your concern, where the concern lies, as opposed with the win and with the win block, and grading in general, kind of aspect. I've heard your concerns from previous discussions, which I can align with, but I'm just, I guess I'm going to, I would like to probably have a conversation offline, to get a better, to make sure I understand where your concerns lie with regards to that grading piece, and, because it's the only thing I ever, I've ever known myself, so.
I'd like to suggest that just grading is a topic come before the committee at a future, future meeting, at an agenda, because I, I think there's a deep discussion to have, both on kind of just the how grading happens, as well as just the kind of what do the grades mean? Because it's, you know, we've observed, and this was something that, you know, came out in the, in the middle school, in the program review, and in Dr. Quirk's plan, that the grades we're giving aren't really aligning with other measures of what our students are learning and are able to do.
I think that's, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
So I think that this is a topic that would be fruitful to look at a little more deeply and bring back in front.
And I completely agree, and, but, and the only reason I bring it up now is because this is what, this is what parents will see, and so it's, and I know there's nothing to do right now, but I'm sort of sitting here going, oh, hoping to have another year like this again, when we haven't really gotten at the heart of this, and to David's point, exactly. We already know that the grades and that honor roll that's published in the apple is actually not really matching up to what we're seeing on our exams, and our state tests, and our performance assessments. That's problematic, because an A isn't, it doesn't really make, it's not, it's not equating to an exemplary or advanced.
So, and I think, in response, and I say this generally, and I'll keep it short, so I still have a problem with the state-issued test, only because it, it doesn't capture what kids, our kids know. It captures that typical, and I still feel, strongly agree, I still think it captures, like, that, that middle or higher sector, but it, for kids who learn diverse, or who are neurodiverse, doesn't mean that they can't learn, but you, it's not reflective on the tests that are presented to them, even with all that accommodations that are given, doesn't truly show the potential of what a lot of our kids, who just happen to learn differently. I only say that as a measure, but, you know, but I'm consistent, and I'm not a big fan of it, only because that it doesn't, it doesn't speak to diverse learners as well, and that's just my opinion, but...
Dr. Brand, you?
No, I'll just say, I appreciate you making the recommendation, the suggestion, it was one I was going to actually make as well, to, to Dr. Bryson's point, but I think it's also a focus of work that's ongoing here with Mr. Gendron, that he's been working with his team around grades in general, so as a, as a, as a larger conversation at a future point in time, I, I think that would be a...
I was, yeah, I forgot to mention that, because in Mr. Gendron's back-to-school message, he mentioned, one of the things they're working on, for example, is like alignment with the retesting policy, for example.
Yes.
Like, you know, under what circumstances can you, you know, retest for, for a grade and so forth, and I think that's part of this larger, this larger discussion.
Interesting.
So I, I would suggest that, at this point, we not take a vote, I think that, because one, we don't have to, it's not, it's not a requirement, I think also, we've provided a bunch of feedback, and so the current form that the manual is in is not, is, you know, we hope that, we hope that there can be some opportunities to incorporate, have that feedback incorporated, and so I think that we've provided, provided our feedback and ideas, and that Dr. Quirk and the administration can take those back to finalize the handbook.
Agreed. Thank you for presenting.
Thank you. And I appreciate that, thank you, and the comments around not requiring a vote, it's not meant to suggest that I don't think it's appropriate to have this opportunity to provide, you know, you with a glimpse of this document, your feedback is helpful, certainly, and so I appreciate the suggestion and the direction we're going, lots for Dr. Quirk and her theme to think about. Your first glimpse from a parent guardian perspective, and that's important, and that's been helpful to inform the content, so thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, that brings us to subcommittee reports. I'm not aware that any subcommittees are meeting over the summer before this meeting, but if anyone has anything to, to mention, please speak now, or forever hold your peace, at least until the next meeting, so maybe not forever, but, all right, and correspondence?
None this evening.
Okay, then looking at future school committee dates and other notable dates, the first day of school, August 30th, for grades one through 12, next Wednesday, first day of school for faculty will be Monday, and so they'll have two days before, before we open school. First day of school for the Boutwell will be on September 5th, after Labor Day, and that will be Orientation Day for Wildwood, first day for Wildwood will be on September 6th. Remember that Wildwood will sort of get that day of school back, or I suppose Boutwell will lose their extra day of school, when the, on the presidential primary in March, when Boutwell will be closed, so that it can be, the school can be used as a polling location, but Wildwood will have school that day, so the two schools will have the same number of school days for the year. September 13th will be our regular session meeting, our first regular session meeting for September, at 7:00 PM. September 19th will be the first visioning meeting for the Wildwood Project. September 20th will be a Wildwood School Building Committee meeting, and then the 26th will be the second visioning meeting, and I'm going to add on here, it's not here, but on the September 27th will be our second September school committee meeting, regular meeting, at 7:00 PM here in the large group instruction.
Dr. Bryson.
David, so just the one to four, and then the six to nine, the one to four is in-person, and the six to nine is virtual?
I thought those were different.
I'm sorry, is that accurate, or no?
The first two meetings, they're offering them in-person and virtual.
And virtual.
Virtual, yes.
At those times?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Wow.
Right, in either, either block, so you can like, attend either block, either virtual or in-person.
That's great.
I'm sorry that that's not clear, we should, we'll be mindful of that in messaging.
That's probably my fault. No, that's fine, I probably missed it.
For example, you don't have to attend both, you're not in six hours of meetings on each of those days.
Because it's the same material?
Yes.
Okay.
One to four and six to nine, that's not how it's going to work. And then there are a bunch of open houses in there, that you'll know from your principal principals.
Okay.
They're also listed on the district calendar.
And listed on the district calendar. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do.
All right, motion by Ms. Burns, and seconded by Dr. Bryson, all in favor? And that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.